Senator Tello, I'd like to make one announcement. Folks, colleagues, yes. due to some technical issues, some amendments came in. I'd like to ask my colleagues here that we end any introduction of amendments, new amendments, other than amendments to the amendment. That I can understand. All right, so that we can speed up the process. Otherwise, we could be here all day on just this one bill.
Okay.
All right. We have currently, if you all take a look at your drive, you'll see all the amendments that are there. It's all been loaded. We have a total of, we have four yesterday afternoon, five. But it looks like some of the amendments were amendments to the amendment. So as we move along, amendments to the amendments, I understand. But no new amendments, folks. We're closing the doors on new amendments.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Senator Tello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity. And good morning to you and my colleagues. Mr. Chair, I have an amendment that's coming up here. And then another amendment in the event this amendment fails. So that's the only two I have, sir. So if you could please allow me the opportunity. It's already being loaded up on the drive. But in the event, and the only reason why, Mr. Chair, it's not on the drive right now is in the event this amendment does not, it passes, then there was no need for that other amendment. So I hope you allow me the courtesy for that, sir.
Understood, but just understand, as the clock is ticking, if you want to wrap this up, folks, take a look at your stuff. You should have done your homework. Get ready for today. Unless this closes up, and then you decide when we go to vote at the end of the week. Okay? Senator Tello, if you could please introduce your floor amendments, and we'll move along on yours.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. And thank you so much again. Good morning to my colleagues as we begin this Lent season. Mr. Chair, I would like to proffer an amendment. It's on the Google Drive at this time. It's B13, TTTL5P29COTW.pdf. And if I may, Mr. Chair, what this amendment does is on line five, page 29, is to amend the bill to read on section four, excuse me, effective date, the section where it says, "Right after the effective date, this act shall be affected." And then this is where the amendment comes in. "Within 30 days of the implementation of an increase in salary of each of the nursing's classification of the government of Guam that is commensurate with the average salaries of nurses of party states to the Nurse Licenseure Compact." And what this basically does, Mr. Chair, is allow us to look at all the members of the 34th, all the members of the NLC, 34 states that already put in, to take an average. And what we're doing here, Mr. Chair, is that by doing that, the salaries that we're looking at increasing to our, you know, nurses would be an average of those states that are part of the NLC. And we want to do this before we become members so that we can provide for a level playing field out there. So that's what my amendment does. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Does any of my colleagues like to speak to of the amendment? Senator Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an amendment to the amendment to proffer.
All right.
And it's in the drive. It's labeled B13, SFP, L5, P29. And so, and I rise in support of the original amendment, but I wanted to add to that the cost of living. Because I think even though the average, we meet the average salaries, there's, it doesn't mean that parity is achieved. Because the dollar goes further with areas that have a lower cost of living. And so, yeah, just to be mindful of the fact that the cost of living increases, the cost, the high cost of living needs to be factored into trying to achieve salaries that are going to retain a very qualified workforce.
Thank you.
All right. So.
Mr. Chair, on a point of order, please. Mr. Chair, on a point of order.
Yes.
Just to take a moment's recess to consult with legal as it relates to this amendment on hand. I support increases of salaries to nurses. But based on this amendment, we're looking at application to the nurse, to the NLC, not about increasing it. Because I, so I want to make sure that this is, to check if this is germane or not. Because you're talking about a completely separate subject. So we can just take a moment's recess to ask legal to opine on this.
Let's take a recess. Thank you.
You know, I think, you know, as far as, you know, the impacts, I think are real. I think we really need to consider these impacts. And, you know, for me, you know, the answer to nursing shortage is pay. It's not joining this compact. I think all our efforts should be put into that, into, you know, ensuring that the pay is increased. And by joining this compact, then that raises the bar even higher. I think, you know, there are arguments against it. And I think that really points to, you know, evidence to show that there is, deep down, there is a belief that there is going to be an outmigration. Otherwise, I would not have any opposition to this. The idea of increasing nurses' pay, should we join this compact to be commensurate with nurses' pay in the states or those that are in the compact? And, you know, we can all probably know that cost of living is so much lower in the states. Anybody who's lived in the states or has traveled in the states knows for sure, you know, a bag of groceries you can easily buy for $20. You can't do that here. Housing. How much is housing worth here? It's very hard for a family to afford under $1,000 of rent. In the states, you can find cheaper rent. So the dollar's going to go much further even if we have same amount of pay. And that's why the cost of living needs to be factored into this. Otherwise, we are going to face the real risk of losing our nurses that we've trained here on Guam under the conditions, very difficult conditions. You know, if we want to answer the nursing shortage, let's pay them. I think that's the answer. It's not joining this compact. And whose is going to benefit, really? If this does take effect, if the outmigration takes effect. So why are we rushing into this, this, at this time? If we can't guarantee we're going to have parity? I think that's the, that's the solution, is pay.
Thank you, Senator Perez, for your, that's the amendment to the amendment. Senator Torres?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise in opposition to the amendment to the amendment. And I ask the good chair to please make a ruling of whether this amendment to the amendment is material to the bill. I believe it is materially different. And the reason that it is, Mr. Chair, is you have to consider that Bill 13-35 is a bill that appropriates $6,000 for the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners to join the Nurse Licenseure Compact. What this amendment does is it makes the enactment of the compact date effective upon 30 days of implementation of an increase in salary of each of the nurses, for the nurses that is commensurate with the average salaries of nurse party states to the nurse licensure compact and relative to the cost of living in Guam. This now, this contingent see that is placed in this amendment to the amendment now requires a whole subset of requirements for this bill and for the licensure compact to take effect. The result of this, from a fiscal point of view, is we know we are appropriating $6,000 for the licensure membership. That's a given, that's discussed. The funds are available, no issue. With this new amendment, you are now essentially With this new amendment, you are now essentially amending an existing nurse study pay that is authorized by public law 35-36, that is ongoing. You're putting different benchmarks in there to include salaries commensurate with an average of states that are on board. And at present, there are 34 states, there are 10 on, coming in, and three in the pipeline. So commensurate with those 34 states. And you're also adding an analysis of the cost of living in Guam as one of the factors. So you are, you are now amending a public law with this amendment. But this is where it is materially different, Mr. Chair. The effect of this will require funding for a new study, the development of a new study. And when the study determines the salary, the implementation of an increase of that salary for all the nurses on Guam. So what started out as a $6,000 appropriation now is an unknown, but significant, significantly materially different, because that unknown now translates to potentially millions of dollars, which was not discussed, which was not vetted. And if we were to go down that course, we're attaching a liability from $6,000 to millions of dollars, maybe $6 million hypothetically, but realistically. So if the good chair were to not rule that this is materially different, you've now taken an appropriation bill that began at $6,000, you're affecting another public law without a public hearing of its own, and you are now upping the appropriation without any input from anybody of $6 million. So please, good sir, I implore you to rule this materially different and to dispense of these, this amendment and this amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Madam Speaker, I'm going to make a rule.
On the point that it's materially different, Mr. Chair, before you rule, I'd also like to speak that this amendment does not at all make an appropriation. There is no mandate in here, there is not a single dime that is appropriated. There's no fiscal impact from this amendment. It sets an effective date, it sets a timeline that was specifically requested by University of Guam, GMH. It links nurse compact together with nurse pay as they requested. And it doesn't mandate that the government pay increased wages, but it says if we don't, then we don't. But if we can, then by all means, we can go forward with this. It sets an effective date, Mr. Chair, which all bills are, I think those are very materially relevant for all bills. It was foreseeable, it was relevant, and it was, in fact, critical to the discussions on this bill, Mr. Chair. So I think it fits the definition of materially, or that it is not materially different. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Brown, you would like to speak to the call for materially different?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do have to point out, I mean, I find it interesting, and sorry, it's been a few years since I've been in the body, but, you know, when I look at the substance of this bill and the $6,000 appropriation, which to me, overall, is really miniscule in the government of Guam budget, I find it interesting that it was assigned to your committee. And I do want to point that out if we're going to talk about what applies and what doesn't apply. You know, I don't know if it's the current trend of this legislature, but if we put any type of financial figure, I assume it's going to go to your committee, whether the substantive portion of the bill really doesn't involve the appropriation. Because we're looking at adding our local nurses to this whole national licensure process. And yet, the concern that some of us have on the floor, and certainly, I think, a concern we should all share, is whether or not this process is going to adversely affect our ability on Guam to keep our nurses here, serving our people and serving our families. That, to me, is the bigger picture. As I mentioned yesterday, all these other things, to me, is nice window dressing, but we need to look at what the real issue is, and that's how can we encourage and keep our nurses here on Guam? I'm not concerned about what's happening in California, or New Mexico, or Rhode Island. And I think that issue needs to be brought to light. I don't want it to be, appear that we're, oh, we're trying to be obstructionist to not allow our nurses to join this national organization, and these are all the great things we're going to get. I think that's great, too. But if it's going to increase the real possibility, the very real possibility, that more of our nurses in this community are going to choose to leave because of what is the real issue, and the real issue really is a compensation of our nurses. I mean, if we can provide competitive salaries, and we have the ability to keep them here and helping our people where we need them the most. So, I mean, if we want to point out about the irony of all of this, I find it ironic that this bill is in your committee as a primary, the fact that you're up there overseeing this because of a measly $6,000 appropriation, and yet, the substance of this bill really should have been in the Health Committee. At least, I see that. I'm sorry, I don't know if the practice has really changed on how we assign bills, but I just have to call it like it is, because that's how I see it.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Chair. For clarity, I know that this has now become a debatable point, which I thought was just a ruling on your, thing on my motion, it was a direct request to you. But nonetheless, I just want to iterate that the effective date is tied now with these amendments, and the amendment to the amendment, to an unknown amount that was not heard or reviewed by the committee. And that is my point, and it is materially different. So if you will please rule, thank you.
Thank you.
That is not a point of order.
Colleagues, the question is posed to the chair to rule it. I've heard your comments, your opinions, and the chair will rule it materially different. Now, if the body wants to vote to overrule the chair, then make the motion, and we'll move from there. All right? So I do rule it materially different. Senator Perez?
I object.
You would like to make the motion to overrule the chair?
Yes, I'd like to call for a vote.
Thank you. Now we'll call for the vote. All in favor of overruling, that it is not, overruling the chair, that is not materially different, please raise your hand, and we'll count. One, two, three, four. Motion fails. Now, we will now move the next four amendment.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I still have the floor on my amendment. You were, you were talking about the previous amendment to the amendment, we're still on my amendment?
So, so, no. Standby, Senator Torres. When I rule it materially different, the only extension to your amendment was to add the cost of living, it caught both, the whole amendment. Unless you want to, you want to challenge my ruling of it is materially different? It includes, I'll read the amendment to everyone, implementation of an increase, the only add-on of Senator Perez was relative to the cost of living. I ruled materially different, the amendment and the amendment. Okay? The amendment to your amendment and your amendment. I rule both.
Mr. Chair, I still have the four, then?
Mr. Chair, I still have the floor because I have another amendment. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And your amendment is located, so we can find that, please?
Mr. Chair, my amendment is on line five, page 29. And this amendment basically is on section four, effective date. This act shall be effective within 30-day calendars of the implementation of the recommended salary increase pursuant to the wage study of all positions covered under the Guam Nurse Plan authorized by Public Law 35-36. It is uploaded, Mr. Chair.
It's uploaded?
It was sent, it was sent like-
It was sent yesterday.
20 minutes ago to the clerks. Okay, let me see if we can refresh.
It's not uploaded on the drive yet, I don't see it. Because I'm looking for it, and I don't see it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm looking too.
If we can take a few minutes, and we'll allow-
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
... to provide everybody a copy, so we can rush that real quick.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a quick recess, thank you. Committee of the whole is back from recess. My colleagues, you should all have a copy of the Senator Tello's amendment. Senator Tello, if you can go ahead and just read over your amendment again and-
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, my amendment begins on line five, page 29, an amendment to the bill to read, section four, effective date. This act shall be effective, and this is where the amendment is included, within 30-day, 30 calendar days of the implementation of the recommended salary increase pursuant to a wage study of all positions covered under the Guam Nurse Pay Plan authorized by Public Law 35-36. Mr. Chair, last term, there was a bill that was passed to do a wage study for the nurses. Now, Mr. Chair, as was mentioned many times before, about individuals who are in the medical field, who came to testify, from GFT, which is a well-respected president, Tim Fidenko, who testified, as well as, brought in testimony, as well as the Dr. Hattori, who came in as well and testified, as well as Lenny Fasadas, people at the GMH, who said that it should be done in parallel, provide a level playing field before we become part of this NLC. This is not coming from me, just me, though I think it makes sense, total sense. But here's the irony of this whole thing. What if we don't have the funding to pay for the nurses? One of my colleagues says, well, if this bill passes, you know, it kind of forces our hand to increase the salary of the nurses. But what if we don't have that funding to increase the salary of the nurses? Then we become part of the NLC, we become members, which opens the floodgate for our nurses to seek better salary, better paying jobs, as well as conditions and the cost of living. It makes it easier for them to go. You know, Mr. Chair, I looked at some of the numbers that the GMH testimony provided, and they quoted states like California, if I'm not mistaken. California was one of them, they quoted, what's the other states they had quoted? Oh, Hawaii, DC, Oregon, New York, with salaries of $54.44 an hour in California, the highest one. Hawaii, $50.03. While we were looking at starting pay here at $17.37. But you know, these numbers they provided is actually, none of these are part of the NLC. But many of our nurses actually leave Guam without, you know, us being in the- But many of our nurses actually leave Guam without, you know, us being in the NLC. Granted, you have that normal rate of Exodus going out of Guam, seeking better, you know, pay and and a lot of them go to California, a lot of them go to Washington as well, Washington State. My goodness, they've got like three memorial clubs in Washington State that are there. They're not part of the NLC. But, Mr. Chair, the point is, if we open the door to the other state, open the door for, to make it easier for our nurses on Guam, after they serve their two years, especially if they graduate from the University of Guam, after they serve their two years, to leave, we're gonna start all over again with like new nurses just graduating servicing our own people here on Guam. We're gonna lose experienced nurses. The whole purpose of there, nothing is, you know, I'm not here to say that let's not be part of the NLC. I'm not. Our nurses, many of the nurses came forward and testified in support of it. And I'd like, I do support it, but we have to do it responsibly. It's our responsibility to make sure that we do this responsibly. Now, if we're gonna become a member, then we should do it the same time that we implement, implement the wage study as stipulated in my amendment to implement of the recommended salary increase pursuant to the wage study that we passed last year. It only makes sense. It's responsible legislation. Because, Mr. Chair, if we don't find the money, and you're the money man, oh, if we don't find the money, then how are we gonna how are we gonna give the salaries to these nurses that they've been calling for an increase for so long? Even GFT mentioned that we need to increase the salaries. If we can't do that and we become part of the NLC, then I think we failed our nurses. We failed them more than we did not allowing us to be a part of the membership of the LLC. We will have not done what we're expected to do, and that is to be responsible on legislation put forward. And this is responsible amendment to the legislation. So I asked my colleagues, so please think about that. What if we don't have the money to increase the salaries for the nurses? What if it's not there? So let's do it in tandem. Let's become a member the same time we pass the salary increase for our nurses. And then I think everyone's gonna feel a lot more comfortable knowing that we may not lose nurses. They may just stay on Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Madam Vice, you wanted to speak to the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and again, like with the previous amendments, as I support the efforts of the study and the public laws that are already in existence today, I'd like for you to rule on this as being materially different again, as we just discussed this on the previous motion. And I want to share with you that it is important, if we're going to acknowledge that it's materially different. I know in the past, being here for eight terms, that things have been different. And I've always said that what may have been good back then may not be good today and vice versa. And yes, things have changed drastically since my inception into the 27th Guam Legislature. And yes, realizing that things that are more than one subject, things that are germane but may be materially different based on how a bill is introduced, is at play today. I understand all that, and again, with all due respect, I ask you to at least opine, I mean, to give your recommendation to determine if this amendment again is materially different.
Thank you, Madam Vice.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Again, this amendment is a good amendment. It's not materially different, it's actually materially critical. It's critical to this bill, Mr. Chair. It's why this bill did not move last year. Because instead of false promises for these nurses, we need to put our money where our mouths are and really produce for them. And make sure that the fears of some of them, that we will have an outmigration from GMH especially, that we address those in tandem. That's exactly what they've asked us. Even the sponsor of the bill at the public hearing brought up that we're gonna do a wage study. In fact, Mr. Chair, that wage study wasn't even fully funded. So I'm very curious to see where that funds are gonna come from. And when we can produce that, get it done, and we can produce the amounts of money that we're gonna need to pay the wages, then we are good to go. Then we have done our share, and when we can help boost up this UOG program, unless we don't want local nurses anymore. And all we wanna do is open the door and bring in other nurses. Because that could have been a solution years ago, but that wasn't the solution that they chose. They chose, we're gonna, we're gonna build our local capacity. And that's what I wanna give a chance to. And if we owe them wages, then let's give them the wages. Let's have the hearings on the bills that's gonna give them the wages. Let's see the study. There's no harm if this thing cannot be implemented because of rules and regs for a year. There's no rush to do this today in advance. But if we can, by this amendment, join them together, it's exactly what they've asked for. It's exactly. It gives us a fighting chance, Mr. Chair, with the other states. And there are so many states that have not joined this compact, and they are paying their nurses. And they don't need the compact because they're paying their nurses. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't think it's materially different. I think it's materially critical.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator, we have both Senators, Senator Brown. So Senator, your hand was up first.
Mr. Chair, it's materially different because it's tied to an unknown fiscal impact. Similar argument with the other one, that has not been determined, has not been vetted, has not been heard by the committee. I also wanna just bring the body back to what the Nurse Licenseure Compact is. It is a membership for one year. It is not a fifty-year mortgage that you're stuck with, that it is an annual membership. You can renew, you have options to get out. The idea that you're gonna tether the enactment of it to an implementation of a salary based on a study, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, is my point. There are immediate benefits to joining the compact and having it effective right now. It is true that, as was discussed, it's gonna take a while for the ORB system to be developed in Guam, the technological point that is gonna, in short, modernize the way the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners issues licenses, investigates nurses from other jurisdictions, contains their data on the professional performance and history of the nurses. It is a modernization effort. Everyone is getting caught up in the discussion about having to do one before the other. I just wanna point out that all the discussion talked about parallel. We have to do things in parallel. Parallel doesn't mean one leapfrogs before the other. It means they go hand in hand. And I've represented to the body that, in fact, there are things going hand in hand. We know that the public law for the nurse study is ongoing. We know that there's other legislation proposed or entertained for nurse increases. Those are the tandems. But in terms of, do you join it now, get the immediate benefits from it now? Telehealth, education, the ability for military nurses to apply to GMH tomorrow if this thing passes tomorrow? Those are all the benefits. Those are the things that we can't dispute. The unknowns are the unknowns, they've never been factored, but please. It's gonna take a year before we can even issue licenses out to our nurses. Don't tether the implementation of this enactment date and forego the immediate benefits, including all the investment that the NLC will work with Guam. This is nursing is one national license. Our nurses take one exam, the same exam. The fluidity for these nurses with the same credential by a national board is the model. People moving about the ability to help, the ability to be deployed at your will. So please, while we're so worried about what to do first, everyone talked about parallel, and no one's abandoned that effort. There's parallel efforts with the study with nurse increases right now. But if you're so worried about joining a compact, you can join it, you can get out of it as easily. Well, it's actually not very easy to get in, apparently, with the way that we've been handling over this bill. But I think it's really just fear mongering. And the bottom line is, this is not a rash effort. This is an effort that began in 2018. 2018, these nurse leaders in our community have been pursuing joining the Nurse Licenseure Compact. I respect them, I wanna help them, I trust them to know what it is that they want, that they believe is best for them. If they decide that it's not anything that they wanted envisioned, the option is to get out. So please, let's stop dancing around with this issue. It's a very straightforward issue. It is a materially different issue, Madam, Mr. Chair, on the same ruling as the prior. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brown, you would like to speak in reference to the amendment or in reference to the statement of materially different before I rule?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I think we can look at the pluses, but what I'm most concerned with, I can appreciate any organization, and certainly the nurses are a very important part of our community. I think, you know, we need to realize during this time of pandemic, the realities that our people are facing. And we didn't have enough nurses. Obviously, when you have extraordinary circumstances, as what we've experienced this past year here on Guam, as many other places in the world, we needed additional nurses to come in, and that was possible. You know, a state of emergency was determined, and they were let in, and they were allowed to practice. And those are under extraordinary circumstances. The fundamental concern I have here is, I'm not here to represent any particular organization or the agenda of any particular organization. I wanna look at the bigger picture, and how is this gonna impact our community? Where we're already challenged in wanting to get quality health care for our people. So many of our people have to go off island to get that type of care through many and considerable expense because they can't, in some cases, get specialty health care that they need. I mean, that's a whole other discussion, but that's a reality. You know, when I listen to Margaret Hattori from the University of Guam, my alma mater, which I've spent many years, I have to listen to her statement. Because she's actually involved in directly educating students that go to the university that, you know, want to become nurses and go through the nursing program, through much investment of our own people here. That whole program was set up to increase the amount of nurses in our community with the hope for our community. I certainly wouldn't wanna be there at the hospital or have an immediate need for health care and not have qualified medical personnel there, particularly nurses, to provide the support that we need from them. And that's the bigger issue here. The bigger issue really does come down to the salary. Because I'm sure most of our people, if they could get a competitive salary here, they would wanna stay. They have their home, they have their family, they have their support network. But because we don't wanna deal with that real reality now, and we wanna the thing that concerns me about this particular bill is it opens up the avenue for more of our nurses. Not that they can't leave without it. As I mentioned, I have a goddaughter that went through and graduated from the program at the University of Guam that no longer lives on Guam, that has pursued her profession elsewhere. Because that ultimately will give her better support and opportunities for her family. I think we can understand that. But why would we, under these circumstances, especially under this pandemic, where we're challenged to have the health care professionals that we need here on Guam, open up the opportunity, the real opportunity, that more of our local nurses will leave? Because this does open that opportunity for them to do so. We've widened the exit gate. And that's a real concern. Maybe for some it isn't here, but certainly for me, in my capacity, it is a concern. You know, I know we all wanna make sure we have our bills passed, and we were the champion of this, and we were the savior of this group and that group, but wow. I mean, if it's something that's going to adversely affect, and I see it as that, I mean, not myself, just listening to it yesterday. If this is not such a threatening issue, then why don't we address the pay issue? Because I know, Mr. Chairman, that's gonna come back to your committee. I mean, I'd like to know, look into the crystal ball, know what our revenue forecast is gonna be. Because every time I drive through Tumon, boy, it's kind of a ghost town down there. And all that's coming home to roost, unless this federal money bails us out, it'll only do it for a time. But before those businesses even recover, it's gonna take a few years. It's gonna take us a few years to get back to where we were just a year ago in this community. And while we wanna promise everything, we're gonna be struggling to even fund existing government operations. Because as I mentioned, after the nurses, it may be the doctors, it may be the Guam police, it may be the firefighters, who all see themselves in this health care process and community safety process as critical. Recognizing that, in the midst of where we are right now, I just don't think, unless we can tie this in or not implement this until we address the compensation issue, or at least improve it so that it's, we have a greater, we have a fighting chance of encouraging and keeping our nurses. I mean, I'd love to see more of our homegrown people here on the island, regardless of what their professional interest is. Or those even that get educated elsewhere and wanna come home to Guam. Otherwise, if that was not a concern, then goodness, who would have an issue about supporting this bill? It sounds all good. But that's the fundamental issue of concern, is opening the opportunity that adversely affects our local community and keeping these medical professionals that we need. And I think unless we address and hold in, gosh, we use the word tandem. I feel like I'm out in the basketball court, you know, dribbling two basketballs here. But there's a need to do that because that is the, I mean, that issue just yells out at us. Because we don't have competitive wages for nursing here on Guam. We don't right now. We're at a tremendous disadvantage already. And this only allows that opportunity to magnify that reality. I mean, I'd like to think that, you know, there's some nurse in, you know, some other state. I won't say New York, since New York is, gosh, the main paid places we normally follow, New York, California, Hawaii, are not even members of this because they do compensate their nurses at a higher level. I'd like to think there's that nurse sitting there somewhere thinking, oh, yeah, I wanna give this up. This is too stressful. I wanna move, you know, thousands of miles across the Pacific, and I wanna work at a local hospital in Guam. Or maybe here or there, I might have the spouse of a military member here who, you know, has nursing credentials and wants to practice locally. I think the odds of that versus the amount of opportunity of our local nurses to leave, I don't think that balances out. We already are challenged now to have and keep nurses here, even without this legislation. So that's the main concern. To me, that's really the bottom line when you look at this issue. And so I definitely stand in support of this amendment and thank the author for bringing it forth. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm gonna rule. Okay?
That's what I'm asking for, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'm gonna rule. I think everybody has spoken on the request for the materially different. You know, my colleague, everybody wants to talk about pay raise. I hope we're in good negotiation when we sit down on the budget. But in reference to this amendment, like I ruled earlier, to the other amendment, I'm gonna rule this materially different, unless the body would like to make a motion to challenge me. to challenge me. Your challenge? All in favor of overruling the chair on that this amendment is materially different? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Motion six, motion fails. Thank you. We'll now move to the next amendment. The next amendment is... Where are we at? Colleagues, we have... Madam Speaker, we have your amendments. You have four. We will proceed with those four. Then immediately after that, we'll recess and come back. The time is 11:30.
If we could just finish this bill, Mr. Speaker, we need to finish by, as soon as we can today, if we're going to do the other bill.
Yes, I prefer to finish it if we speed it up.
Well, I object to a recess. Yes, I'd like to finish the bill.
Okay, then let's move.
So I reserve my time on the round, and that was waived to me, so that I could speak on this bill, Mr. Chair, as we normally do in second reading. And then I will make my, proffer my amendments at the end. There are four of them. They should be uploaded to the drive. Mr. Chair, I hope the legislature can keep sight of a couple things during the debate on this bill. First, that Guam has some of the most sought-after nurses due to their excellence and their diverse experiences. They've served in many roles in our island community, and we've seen that even, especially during this pandemic. In addition to their regular roles, they're volunteering, they're doing all kinds of things. They're extremely valuable to us. Second, for the decades Guam has fought against brain drain in all professions, through scholarships, apprenticeships, increased hiring, hiring preferences, promotions, and pay. Those before us had been trying to fix the shortage of nurses by government action and investment through scholarships and incentives. And the many years it has taken us to build up a nursing program that is award-winning, that supplies at least 20 nurses a year for the last five years. And finally, to have a focus on nursing pay and retention policies at GMH. We are in the midst of an upside-down economy that is giving us the perfect storm of circumstances to put our money where it truly belongs, not in $150 off-island nurses, but in the retraining of our entire segments of our community. Expansion of our nursing programs to finally accommodate all those that may be interested, to retrain and train our most skilled nurses and promote them into higher-paying specialty and hard-to-fill areas, to allow them to pursue further education and help us teach, to expand our local excellent nurse force to their full potential, to address the full demand and delicate balance between the hospitals, private sectors, and our public health system. It is them that these efforts are for, not for employers and managers who want to bypass the nursing license board, or to have lower costs, to avoid the $150 or $100 licensing fee, or lower wages. If we have discovered that the real impediment to hiring nurses on Guam for short periods of time is the $100 application fee, then by all means, we can address that much easier than $150 an hour. Or if our nursing license board needs to screen faster or in a more thorough way, then by all means, they can and should do the work to change their process. There are so many other ways to achieve the benefits promised by the compact. We can allow licensed nurses in any other state to be expedited here and still submit to our jurisdiction for discipline when necessary. We do not have to give all that up right now. COVID has shown us that nurses can be licensed in two days, probably faster if they work on it. I've met several military spouses volunteering at vaccination sites, working side jobs in private clinics or GRMC. Licensing and local accountability did not deter them. I understand why many of our local nurses like the idea of the compact. It gives them mobility. It allows them to avoid any perceived hassle of applying in any other state that's under the compact. But the fact remains that not every state is a part of this compact, and they've chosen not to be. And I just want to caution that Guam has a very unique situation, and we also have to make a very unique decision as a legislature. States that are not part of the compact include Massachusetts, Michigan, Pennsylvania, Alaska, Rhode Island, Vermont, California, Connecticut, the District of Columbia, Hawaii, Illinois, Minnesota, Nevada, New York, Ohio, Oregon, Washington State, and all the territories. And the fact that they're not members of the compact, I take very seriously, because this issue has also been debated strenuously in those jurisdictions.
Point of information, Mr. Chair?
Excuse me. I would like that point of information to be raised after I am done speaking, Mr. Chair.
Whatever.
Yes. You have point of information, whose senators?
I just want to bring up a point of information that the states that were named, the majority of them have pending legislation for to join the NLC. So the fact that they, information that they chose not to be, in fact, they have chosen, and it's...
I thank you for that point of information, and I'd like to discuss it, in fact, Mr. Chair, because as was told to us earlier, we cannot create the facts or recreate the facts. It is a misrepresentation to conclude that since jurisdictions have legislation pending, as we do, that they are in support or that they have passed such legislation. In fact, many of the jurisdictions that either have not yet adopted or are pending legislation for this compact, there are state nursing associations who are opposed to their state joining the compact. And I'll talk about that a little more later. But the states that I listed have not joined the compact, and I updated this before I spoke, Mr. Chair. They have not joined the compact. And as I said, there have been people on both sides of this question in those jurisdictions as well. If this compact is clearly going to bring nurses to Guam, no one would oppose it. The problem was, when we had hearings, even the nursing compact professionals, representatives from the states, could not give us data. They would not give us any data as to what the impacts had been in other jurisdictions, or had there been any studies as to what the impacts might be on Guam. In supplemental testimony received last week, NLC provided a comparison of the nurse salary structure on Guam to that of the states of Kansas, West Virginia, and Alabama, which are similar to Guam's pay structure, and stated, "In every case where we analyze the number of these states pre-NLC compared to post-NLC implementation, there is not a decrease in the number of nurses that can be attributed to the state joining the NLC." They further stated, quote, "In fact, the number of nurses increased. If the opponents' claim of max exodus were true, the states with the lowest salaries should be devoid of nurses," unquote. I find it interesting that they have data analyzing the number of states pre-NLC compared to post-NLC. During the public hearings on Bill 293-35, I had requested this data and was informed that NLC did not do this type of analysis. But in the three states that they did provide, they want us to compare our salaries are equivalent to Kansas, Alabama, and West Virginia. I'll take a look at those states. Kansas is the fourth lowest in cost of living, with an index of 87.9. The average rent for a two-bedroom is about $752, and livable wage is about $48,000 per year. Alabama and West Virginia are not far behind. Alabama's cost-of-living index is 89.3, and West Virginia's is 91.1. In other words, their salaries are similar to ours, but their cost of living is very good. On the other hand, in Guam, the average rent for a two-bedroom, one-bath house at 950 square feet costs $2,205 a month. The average monthly rent for a 480-square-foot furnished studio apartment will run $1,238. The average utility rate for one person in a 480-square-foot studio is $180 a month, and $307 for two people in an 850-square-foot flat. The price of a Big Mac Combo meal is $9, and a 2-liter bottle of Coca-Cola will run you $4.37, unless you buy it on base with cheaper access. We have a much higher cost of living here on Guam, Mr. Chair, and our nurses on Guam are 34% below the national average, according to statistics from Guam Memorial Hospital. I know it... In Massachusetts, the Massachusetts Nurse Association has called the compact, and I got these from their websites, "a wolf in sheep's clothing." Supporters of the bill have been very loose with the facts and advocating this measure. There is no urgency for this bill. It will allow health care employers to outsource RN or nursing jobs to states with lower standards and lower pay scales. It would allow bad nurses to keep working. The media has documented numerous cases in which RNs with penalties and criminal charges against them move from state to state through the loose ties of the interstate compact to avoid job loss and prosecution. Each state has different standards on what criminal activities can and can't bar you from being licensed. Some states have no continuing education requirements. That's been a big factor in some of the states. They talk about who benefits from the outside third party would be making revenue from taking over the licensure background checks. The Washington State Nurses Association, that was Massachusetts, and the Washington State Nurses Association has said, "The Washington State Nurses Association is committed to supporting nurses and reducing barriers to licensure, especially for military spouses and partners. However, WSA does not support the NLC." Proponents of the NLC say that the NLC will improve access to care and help with states' nursing shortage. However, because a registration requirement for nurses entering a state under a compact license is not allowed under the compact, no data exists to prove either of these statements are true. In fact, many states in the NLC still say they have a nursing shortage. This is still on the Washington State Nurses Association. They say the new Mexico legislature recently passed a bill outside of the NLC legislation that would require nurses entering New Mexico under a compact license to register within 30 days. Registration allows a state to know who is practicing within its borders and to track the flow of nurses into its state. And that way, they would be able to track if the NLC is making a difference. For example, is the NLC being used by predominantly nurses living in border cities? Is NLC bringing additional nurses into New Mexico? Or are more nurses leaving New Mexico to work across the border in Texas? They want to know who carries a compact versus a compact license versus a home state license, and where they are practicing in order to understand national, regional, and state-based nursing workforce. They believe in Washington State that this is critical to workforce planning and development. And then they talk a little bit about the fiscal analysis of NLC impact on state's Board of Nursing, and that is just because the nurses that are coming in, they do not need to be licensed in the state anymore. They say NC SBN, which is the, I'm not sure the NC, sorry, but it's the NC State Board or States Boards of Nurses, States Boards of Nursing, yeah, should provide a fiscal analysis of states party to the compact showing the financial impact NLC has had on their state boards of nursing and on their state-only license fees. WSNA have spent considerable time and effort attempting to better understand the impact that the NLC is having on nursing shortages, on individual nurses, and on revenue and license fee projections for Washington State Nursing Commission. Without this information, our state legislature does not have a clear picture of whether the NLC is meeting its intended goals or how it would potentially impact our association members and our nursing commission. And I think everybody that testified on Guam had these same sentiments. They didn't know. Nobody could predict. We are hoping, and there's a tool that maybe will help us, but they did warn us that it might hurt us. And so I bring up these other jurisdictions, Mr. Chair, only to show that the issue of joining the compact is being debated by health professionals, experts, and government leaders across the nation. The NLC, in its supplemental testimony stated, that was submitted on our bill here on Guam, stated that those who oppose the NLC legislation, quote, "lack subject matter expertise in the areas of occupational licensure and interstate compacts. Their claims are based on fears. They are, in fact, a minority opinion," unquote. The NLC testimony also called the concerns raised on a potential exodus of Guam nurses as not based on facts, or an alarming claim intent to cause concern among the legislature that is not based on facts. Mr. Chair, I don't think I need to be a subject matter expert in area of occupational licensure and interstate compacts to understand cause and effect. And I did not take my responsibility lightly. I researched almost every jurisdiction, Mr. Chair. And to say that our claims are based on fears, implying that logic is not being used in the analysis of this legislation, but also that somehow being fearful is not a legitimate consideration, is clearly an argument made easily by somebody far removed from the everyday reality of our lives here on Guam, our unique circumstances. They will not be dealing with the impact of this policy on our nursing capacity and our shortage. We will. Our people will. This is one of the biggest criticisms by many jurisdictions debating NLC legislation. It's a blanket legislation that does not consider unique conditions of a place, nor does it allow for modification of the policy to address particular circumstances. Anyone who wants ease of licensing and a more efficient process in our licensing offices, our permitting offices throughout the government, we should insist on that. Hawaii is a non-compact state with ease of licensing, as testified during the hearing. 300 specialty nurses were licensed on Guam during the pandemic within two days. Efficiency can be achieved, Mr. Chair, and it is incumbent upon our government to do that. There were concerns from members of our community, which includes nurse leaders, longtime nurse leaders, like Dr. Margaret Hattori Uchima, Dean of the UOG School of Nursing, and the GMH Administrator Lilian Pisadas and other health professionals. Dr. Hattori Uchima stated, quote, "The reality is that there is a nursing shortage. It is severe and not improving." The program continually discusses the nursing shortage. The program continually discusses the nursing shortage and the need to assist our island community with students. The compact passage will make it easier for our graduates to move off island, and I implore our leaders to discourage use of the compact by our graduates. We are unable to limit the new graduates and disallow them from applying for compact licensure. But the scholarship is not a loan program. It is a service payback program to ease the nursing shortage and to assist in providing nurses for the island. I've continually voiced my concerns and have been informed that this cannot be included in the bill and that the nurse licensure compact administrators require all states and territories to utilize the same compact." GMH, in their testimony, also said that the advantage of the NLC is the expediency and reduction of processing of the nurse licensure applications by the Board of Nursing on Guam, so that the nurses can begin working immediately. But they also very clearly said the downside is that there will also be a continual loss of nurses, local nurses. Hence, it is imperative that we address and adjust the current salary structure for our nurses. And of course, Guam nurses, in a poll that was sent out a few days ago, support an NLC license. It increases their potential for mobility, experience, and better quality of life. We can't fault them for that. Anyone in any profession would prefer a license that is multi-state. I certainly would like my California bar exam to have applied to Guam, but I had to take both exams. I would have liked that my Guam license would allow me to practice anywhere too, Mr. Chair. What the Guam Board of Nurse Examiner Survey failed to ask is will you leave Guam when the compact is enacted? Do you support expansion of training of local nurses? Should we stop efforts to grow the local workforce or promote local nurses to fill the positions of off-island nurses instead? As policymakers, we need to examine the picture, the bigger picture. We need to take into account the overall well-being of our community and how legislation will impact everyone, the most vulnerable at the very least. We should ensure that Guam nurses can be compensated at an equitable and comparable national rate so that we can improve their quality of life here at home and offer incentives to stay and be cross-trained and promoted. We can't make them stay, but we can give them reason to consider staying. The Director of Administration, according to Guam law, has been charged since at least nineteen ninety-eight with providing recruitment and retention incentives for nurses in the government of Guam, to review salary schedules every three years and upgrade as needed, to ensure classifications are competitive with the national average. The government has ignored its mandates for years, and we need to focus and keep the pressure on with the bills that we have introduced to increase salaries and better working conditions, to continue, to get that done. If we can get that done this, this year, Mr. Chair, then we are free to experiment anywhere we want, but at least cover our bases and, and give ourselves a fighting chance. So I ask my colleagues, just please consider what I've said, the testimony that we have heard, and I have these amendments that I would like to proffer, Mr. Chair. So the first one. Okay, I just want to confirm. These are all on page twenty-nine. Okay, so the, they're all, the file names say line twenty-nine, but they're all actually on page twenty-nine. Okay, so I'll be, and they're all adding a new section, except for the, the last one, which is an effective date. So the first one I'll begin with is to add a new section that will read expedited nurse licensure prior to nurse licensure compact implementation. The Guam Board of Nurse Examiners may waive nurse licensure requirements, permits, or fees required by law, rule, or regulation, or adopt procedures for expedited licensures for applicants licensed in another jurisdiction prior to the implementation of the nurse licensure compact in Guam. The reason I'm making this amendment, Mr. Chair, is because of that argument that this is the only way we can get military spouses to work for us is to adopt this nurse licensure. That's, that's false. There are other states who have made it easy, and I just think it's a matter of effort on our part, Mr. Chair, to do that. And if we have nurses that are banging down our doors to apply for Guam, we should make it easy for them. We should facilitate that as much as possible. So this puts on the Board of Nurse Examiners to determine what are the impediments to this process. And as we've seen during COVID, when the governor issued an executive order that pretty much waived all requirements, the nurse board came up with which ones they were going to stick to and which ones they would not. In fact, I think the board delegated the authority to just one person to make these determinations, but, but I'm saying it's doable. And if there's an impediment to hiring military spouses, then fix that impediment. If there's an impediment that's taking GMH hiring more than two days, then fix that impediment. And so that's what this amendment is for, and it adds at the bottom that the Legal Bureau is authorized to make technical corrections.
Would any of my colleagues like to speak to this amendment? Looking across, Senator Torres.
If the, the proffer may so yield, I just want to ask, isn't there already a mechanism in place to issue temporary licenses? And, you know, do you feel that this is necessary? Because the one thing that, that I wonder if it's, if it's necessary to put in because that already exists, I believe, by executive order, or, or actually is already in place with the Board for the past year?
That's correct. Oh, yes, I will yield.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, and that's exactly my point, is that they've been able to do it for a year. They should be able to do it if it's necessary, if it eases the shortage of nurses on Guam, and if it's wise. So this is taking that executive order and putting it into a statute so that they will use their experience and their wisdom and come up with a policy that they can continue beyond the emergency. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And a follow-up then, but, but does the proffer of the amendment fear that waiving nurse licensure requirements may also impact the safety of scrutinizing the licenses? Or is that not the way that you intend to read? Because I'm just, that's my first impression.
Of course, if they waive, you know, I am counting on the board to use their discretion and their judgment and to implement rules in a, in the regular rule-making process, where they are going to hear from other nurses, they're going to, they are going to deliberate on what is the best way to remove impediments. What is, you know, how can they make it quicker? And if they decide in their wisdom, I hope, you know, I'm being just a little bit sarcastic now, so I'm going to stop that, but it's, it's, I hope that the first rule they don't want to waive is, is the rule that says, you know, we're gonna, we're going to make sure that safety is insured, right? Yeah, yeah, and I know that they know how to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Torres, you have a follow-up?
If I still have the floor, the, the reason that I ask that is, I believe this is one of the reasons that the Board opposes this, is because it doesn't have the safety mechanism that is in place if you were, for example, to be in the compact and have the database and ready access to the histories of all the nurses. So I don't believe it's necessary, and I think by putting it in statute, it, it kind of leaves open an area where it, it could not be as safe as it needs to be. So I just want to point that. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. Chair. I never heard that the Board opposes this. They've been practicing this for the past year.
Yes. Looking across, Senator Cello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think the author of this amendment, because it, it was one of the things that was resonating through the public hearing, both in the Thirty-Fifth Guam Legislature as well as this one, about how it would make it so much easier for these nurses coming to Guam to be part of, of our healthcare. And it, it was brought up about mostly military nurses, you know, that come here where their spouse has been stationed on Guam and they're looking for a job, and some of them don't want to do it because it's too difficult to get through, or actually, some of them want to get started right away. I mean, this is something that was brought up many times during the public hearings about the ability to get them up and running. Who has mentioned also, Mr. Chair, during the last year, how they've been expediting, and that was brought up yesterday, how they've been pushing this through with Guam Memorial Hospital, who came and testified. This, this basically, like the good author says, it does solidify it and make it into law. It doesn't just become an executive order, especially an executive order that was implemented during a state of emergency. Now, once a state of emergency ends, you know, the executive orders on those end, they end. So it doesn't have that avenue to do so. And if the governor is claiming that she should be, everything should be hunky-dory by June or July, well, that's good, but then that also kills the executive orders. So, Mr. Chair, this, this totally makes sense because this is what many people have talked about during the public hearing on expediting, and this only helps our community. This will only help our community.
Point of information, if I may, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator, thank you, Senator Cello.
I, I just want to correct a statement that I made. These, this expedited temporary licenses on an expedited basis already exist in the, the rules and regulations for the nursing, and I was informed that based on that, the Board does, in fact, oppose this amendment. So I'm just stating that for the record.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone would like to, any other hand to speak on the amendment? If not, I'm going to ask the Speaker to close. Senator Frank Blas, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I can, thank you for the conversation. I have two fundamental issues, concerns with, with, with the amendment, and first being waiving these licensure requirements just for the purpose of waiving, not attached to, in the case of what we're going through right now with the pandemic, you know, it's, it's seen that it's, 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 the waiver is possibly necessary to fill gaps of where it is needed. My read of the amendment, though, is that it provides for the waiver of these requirements for any nurse, for any reason. There's some concern earlier, and it continues to express that we want to keep our, our nurses here, but then we also don't want to take away from the opportunities that exist here. I can see where this can be applicable to fill positions, nursing positions that are one very short or in dire need. So, well, I can, I can see what this is for. I don't know, and if, if the author of the amendment can yield to the question whether there was any caveats, for lack of a better term, for this process, because I just don't want to create a law that now, or just gives them carte blanche to say, okay, you know, you're from New York, practical nurse. I don't know the, you know, the different professions or the different, you know.
All right, and let me get the speaker, the author. Madam Speaker, we react to you to that question, please.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I think there's a misunderstanding. This, this amendment does not take away anything from the temporary licensing that the Board is currently authorized. It doesn't not take away from any of the requirements that they currently have. It's trying to, and doesn't take away from the emergency licensing that they are authorized to do. It requires them to go through a rulemaking process and to decide exactly where, which nurses or what classifications or categories they can improve their process. It requires them to do that. It requires to find, them to find out why is Hawaii's licensing so much more efficient than ours? That's what was testified at the hearing. And, and so that is just to require them to go through that. And I don't think there's anything that's going to get through this process without, you know, ultimately coming through here in the AAA process. But it does allow them to debate this and, and to, you know, figure it out, to really lay it on the table, what were the impediments, and, and try to implement that.
Senator Blas, does that answer your question?
That answers actually the first one. I actually remember I said I have two. The second one is just in the construction of the language. May waive nurse licensure requirements, permits, or fees required by law. That actually puts our local nurses at an unfair advantage who had to go through that same process. And so therein lies my, you know, my second concern, is that we may, they may come up with rules and regulations that makes it easier and you don't have to require, you know, the, as, as was, as was stated earlier in earlier testimony, you know, there, there are some jurisdictions that don't require continuing education and, and the like. And I know that's required here. So are these requirements, these waiver of, of licensure requirements, going to be less stringent, for lack of a better term, or more lenient than what is already required of our local nurses?
So that, that's your question?
Yeah, that's my, that's my second concern, so yes. And so that's my second question, yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Speaker, author, I'd yield to that question.
Yes, I am happy to yield to that question, and I thank you for the question. It's a good question. And, no, the intent of this is, is to reinforce that if, if operating under the nurse compact, those nurses coming from other places, they're not paying our one hundred dollar licensing fee. So I'm saying, if that was the impediment, and that's what GMH wants, something faster where they don't have to pay the one hundred dollar licensing fee, then they should, that the Board of Nurse Examiners should look at that, and they should make it applicable wherever they think it will facilitate. And I'm not going to speak for them where they might think that is true, but I'm just saying that's an issue because of what, you know, was testified. It's, it's, there's an, there's a, you know, they want a smoother process, and so it's incumbent, I think, that the nurse examiners tell us why our process is not smooth and make it smoother, make it better. And that, yeah, that I would hope that in their judgment, they would not see it, you know, fit to waive fees for others, that they do not waive for our local nurses especially. But I'm just saying, that goes to the compact, it's, 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 your point is actually, you know, reinforcing that under the compact, they're not going to pay fees to Guam. Only our local nurses will pay the nurse licensing fees. That's why, you know, the questions about the revenue changes that we were trying to predict. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for the, for the answers. And I understand, however, in the construct and in just reading the law, my fear is that unless those individuals who will be charged with this responsibility actually heard the explanation, this can be misinterpreted otherwise in its construct. And so that is my concern in this. I, I, I understand and I appreciate, but, you know, the, the concern here and, and the desire for the author of the amendment to be able to provide some compromise, if you will, and, you know, in, in the bill. It's just that I'm concerned that the, the language doesn't necessarily say that. And a year down the road, when the tape, this tape is in the archives and can't be retrieved, nor is there any transcript of just the conversation we had right now on the attempt, we've seen this many times before and with, with, with statutes. this many times before and with, with statutes, okay? What is it intended for and how it is, how it is enforced, or how, how is it implemented, or two, you know, night and day? And I just don't want to see that with this one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Do you have an amendment to that amendment, or no? Okay. I'm looking for hands, does anybody? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just have a question for the proffer of the amendment. Would, I think, you know, maybe some of the issues as far as waiving, you know, rules, regulations might be an issue, you know, probably proffer an amendment to the amendment. Basically, you know, omitting the part, waive nurse licensure requirements, permits, fees required by law, rule, regulation. I think what's important here, I think the intent is to adopt an expedited process. And I think maybe, you know, I, I want to retain that because I, I do see the importance of that. You know, I myself, when I first moved to Guam, I, I did apply to the Guam Memorial Hospital as a medical technologist. I didn't get a response a year late, till a year later. By that time, and I was already in another profession. So, you know, I think that, you know, expediting process needs to be done, you know, regardless, and I, I do support that part of the amendment to ensure that, you know, we, you know, we, when we attract people to come to Guam, you know, that we're able to attract them into these fields that are necessary. So, I mean, with the procedures, I think that with it, with, you know, by adopting these procedures, then we can probably then determine whether fees will be waived. Yeah, so I think that might be, I guess that's my amendment to the amendment, is to, you know, I, I don't have it ready, but I would just like to strike out any, you know, after May to the or, so waive nurse licensure requirements, permits, or fees required by law, rule, regulation, or, and just say may adopt procedures for expedited licensure for applicants. So that may, I think that might answer some of the concerns.
Senator Perez, what is your proposed amendment, so we can, we can all follow, because I was just trying to follow along? And did you have a question you wanted to pose to the author of the amendment?
Um, or maybe I'll just proffer the amendment for now. So, um, I would like to delete where it says waive nurse licensure requirements, permits, or fees required by law, rule, and regulation, or.
You want to delete that?
Yes.
Okay, so you're deleting from May waive?
Sorry, keep the May, but delete waive?
Do you have that written up yet, so that we're not?
No, I don't, but to save a trip, I just want to.
Save the trip, okay, let's go for it.
Get rid of, get rid of from waive?
Everybody's game with it, I'm game, I'm no problem.
So omit waive nurse licensure requirements, permits, or fees required by law, rule, and regulation, or, and just keep everything else.
All right, you're done? You've, you've identified the after the word May and then after the word or, before adopt, correct?
Yeah, just keep adopt procedures, so from that point. So the, the, basically what I would read is the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners may adopt procedures for expedited licensure for applicants licensed in another jurisdiction prior to the implementation of the Nurse Licensure Compact on Guam. So that doesn't preclude waiving fees, it just ensures that there is a, a plan in place to adopt an expedited process. I don't know if that makes sense?
All right. I had, uh, there was a hand up from Senator Clint. Senator Clint, you, okay, none. Does any of my colleagues would like to comment to that amendment, to the amendment? Senator Tello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Chair, I just have a question to the author of the amendment, to the amendment, if she should, shall yield. Mr. Chair? I have a question to the author of the amendment, if she should.
Yes, if you can state your, your question, and then I'll ask.
So my, thank you so much. I, I see what, uh, the authors, the good author is trying to do here, you know, to allow the Guam Nurse, Board of Nurses Examiners to create what would they feel would be in, in the best light for any requirements issued, any waiving that should be issued. I, I think it, it does make sense because it could be broader, but the question I have here is, would, would you actually want to maintain the rules and regulations and not strike out rules and regulations, or adopted procedures for exped, because I think it might go twofold, the rules and regs, as well as, you know, any kind of adopting procedures for expediting. You know, it covers both, both bases, and especially by having or attached to it. So it still leaves them, it might be just miniscule, but I know that the good author has taken procurement law and has taken classes regarding to this, so, so my question is, would there be any harm maintaining rules and regulations and/or, not and, but or adopting procedures continuing on?
Senator Perez, do you yield to the question?
Uh, yes, I, I see with the, the, the question that perhaps it may require law changes. Yeah, my, my intent basically is to allow the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners to, to develop an expedited process. And I think, you know, I guess the question for me, the, the concern for me is waiving, right? Waiving a, a broad, you know, let's see if he, that one.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, and to, to the author, it, it would adopt procedures, which you said was broad, but by also allowing them to create rules and regulations as well, it, I guess that might be, you know, included in an adopt procedures, but I, I don't want to rule it out, so.
Okay, yeah, so I think maybe the, the question is not just adopting procedures, but also recommending policies?
Rules and regs, yes.
Rules and regs. I think that would be, you know, in line with, you know, trying to expedite the process, should there be a, a legislation that's needed. So I, yeah, I think, okay, so I would have to.
Senator Perez?
Change that.
After you've answered the questions, what is the amendment now? Are, are you going to propose another change to your amendment, or, or what? I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to follow as we go along. I know the other colleagues are actually looking at the paper too, so, do you want to restate it, or you want to give it some thought and then write it up so we can see it? So we're not chasing after the, the words on the paper, please?
Yes, I think I need to, to restate, write it up, because with the, the dialogue that's happening now, I think it's important to recognize that it's not just procedures, but perhaps there could be rules and regulations that may need amending, even laws, first.
Senator Perez, I'd ask that you just go ahead and withdraw your amendment and then restate it when you're ready. Okay, so we're not, uh, otherwise, if, if we're going to go into recess, I want a recess for us to go for one hour recess. It's 12:30. Some of us need to take medication, I know in the group.
Could I pass on that amendment and go on to another amendment?
Senator's side?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, I, I have a, hopefully, an easy one.
Let's move to the other amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the, it's again, to add a new section on page 29, it's a reporting requirement. It will read a new section, reporting requirement, upon the implementation of the Nurse Licensure Compact and quarterly thereafter, the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners shall report to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, Health Professional Licensing Office, the number of nurses who hold a multi-state nurse license issued by the GBNE, and a number of nurses licensed by the other nurse compact licensure jurisdictions who are employed or privileged by a hospital or clinic in Guam. The DPHSS HLO shall forward a copy of the report to the Speaker of Ilhiazla Turanguaha no later than five business days upon receipt. This is just to get reporting requirements, some of the states do not have good evidence of this, and I think that we should.
Thank you. Do I see any hands? None. Do I have an objection to this amendment? None. So motion, this amendment? Senator Torres, did you have an objection to the amendment, ma'am, or want to speak to the amendment?
I want to speak to the amendment. I just, um, I, I just want to mention in, in consideration of the board that they really only have one or two people, but, um, no, if, if the body really feels that they need this data, I, I guess it's okay. I was just, I was just being a little considerate of the, the manpower, but, um, no, I, I don't object. Thank you.
Are there any objections? Do you want to speak to it? If, there's no objection, so there being, there's no objection.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would like to speak on the amendment.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very short, you know, I appreciate this amendment because what is, one of the things I brought up to one of my colleagues when the good author mentioned earlier about New Mexico, how they are implementing, I think it was New Mexico, I'm not quite sure if it was, or Texas, or one of those states that are part of the NLC, that they're providing them, put into law to find this data, to capture this data, to really see what nurses are really coming into their states and what, and what nurses are exiting. So this is a great amendment, I appreciate this information that be provided to us, so we can see. And as I mentioned earlier, of course, the NLC is like a one-year period, so that gives us enough time to review this data if we so decide to want to continue on being a member. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There being no objection, this motion, this amendment, this motion passes. Senator Therese, Madam Speaker, your next amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one is an, an annual fiscal impact report, another section to be added on page 29. It will read, the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners shall provide an annual fiscal impact report of licensure fee revenues and annual operating expenditures associated with compact membership to the Speaker due one full year after the implementation of the Nurse Licensure Compact and annually thereafter.
Does anyone would like to speak or have any objection to that? That's another reporting requirement.
Uh, may I just ask the author, what, what, what is anticipated here in terms of an annual fiscal impact? And thinking about the, the Board of Nurse Examiners and their capacity, um, is this really, is this really fair to request of them? I, I'm trying to understand what type of a report this will be. If the author will help me understand, I'd appreciate it.
It's going to report licensure fee revenues, which they do now because all of the licenses are Guam-based, so they always report that, and operating expenditures. But now that if they're under the compact, I also want to know how many licenses or nurses working on Guam were, were not licensed to the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners, and that's, that's the information that we have asked for during these public hearings that they've said is not available, that they could not predict. And I'm not worried about the work on the board because it's really just counting numbers, how many nurses, and you count that by a license, you know, multiply that by a license fee, plus, they've talked about they're going to get a $90,000 ORPS machine to expedite their work, their work's going to be cut, and that's, I think, what they're looking forward to. So I don't, I don't think this is any, any hardship for them at this point. It's just to tell us how many nurses, under which license, and that, did they pay revenue or not.
Okay, so, so, and this information would be borne from the Board of Nurse Examiners? Okay, I understand. Thank you very much for the, the explanation.
Are there any objections? Or anyone who would like to speak? I think I may be rushing it a little bit too fast, but I don't see any hands up. There, are there any objections? There being none, amendment passes. Madam Speaker, your next amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final amendment is, again, on page 29, it's, it's to amend the effective date, which is section four of the bill. It would, instead of being effective upon enactment, change it to be effective one year following enactment. Mr. Chair.
In other words, one year later. Senator Torres, you'd like to speak to that amendment?
Mr. Chair, I respectfully oppose this amendment. It's the same argument that I made with many other amendments about the importance of having the enactment be immediate. The, the point is that the direct benefits of the compact can be realized immediately, and we should not forego those immediate benefits that Guam can realize. The one year, one, we also understand that there are parallel efforts to address any retention and recruitment concerns. Those are parallel efforts with other legislation and other policy decisions that we will make. And we also are aware that there will be no issuance of licenses for any of Guam nurses that choose the multi-state license because the, the infrastructure for the, the IT infrastructure with the ORPS system cannot be completed for at least a year. So the, the one-year pushout is a given. We already know that's a given. So the idea of losing nurses who would avail of this license, that fear, even if you want to assume that that's, you know, the worst-case scenario, that, that will not happen anyways for at least one year. So I, I don't think that it's necessary to change the effective date and push it out a year because you've only lost again another year. The Bernadette Santos mentioned how we missed the boat on the IT, where we could have been, realized the technology implementation if we had, if we had affected this at the time that they proposed it to us or, or asked us to help them with it. So I'm just saying, you know, let's not waste more time. Everything takes a while to, to work in, and also, the efforts for the recruitment and retention that has to do with salaries, nurse studies, all of those things, is ongoing and will, it, it'll be a concurrent thing with this one year anyways. So please don't change the date. You don't want to miss out on direct benefits that can be immediately realized. Thank you.
So that's an objection?
Yes, sir.
Looking for hands on the amendment. Senator Tello?
Sis, mase, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity and to rise in support of this amendment. I don't think time is going to be the, what we're, we should be so concerned about. I think it's about the finances is what we should be concerned about. You know, do we have enough funding to, to raise these nurses, to, to bring that parallel, to bring the, the level playing field from state to state and from Guam to state? And, and it was mentioned too earlier that when I asked the question to the NLC, that they were mentioning it take a year out before this is implemented, but there was a possibility of it only taking six months to implement. You know, Mr. Chair, we're going into budget, this coming, you know, coming up, and we know that on, by the time we get to the budget to discuss, this could, could actually be So if you look at that timeline, that's a, that's a concern, a great concern. They can expedite this. So I think, Mr. Chair, it's prudent for us to be responsible too with regards to how we move forward on this legislation, and I think it, it provides a little bit more responsibility on this, by putting this amendment into the, this legislation for us, especially when we reach, when we discuss the budget. So I stand in full support. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I do appreciate this amendment, considering all the dialogue that has happened thus far, and of course, you know, we really would have liked to tie it to more of the, the pay, right? Implementation of, of increases of pay to nurses. Implementation of increases of pay to nurses. And I think this is a, perhaps another way to address that. I think one year may be a little bit too strict timeline, but, you know, I'm willing to, you know, rise in support of this. I think, you know, in the testimony that was given, you know, it would take a year, a year and a half to implement something like this. And it just really, I think, falls in line with what was mentioned earlier or yesterday in implementation of, of the licensure. So I rise in support. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Senator, Madam Speaker, would you like to close? Oh, Senator Shelton. Speak on to the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And I also rise in opposition to, to the amendment. I think if enacted immediately, Guam's membership to the NLC would mean a lot of good things for Guam. We'd be the first of the U.S. territories and open our island to a very specialized nurse force, tele-nursing opportunities, online nursing education, increased security in the nurse vetting process. And, Mr. Chair, we have an opportunity here to make significant headway in addressing our island's chronic nursing shortage. This is a necessary piece of the puzzle, as we heard yesterday in the testimony. This is just the first step we need to, uh, give our nurses the support that they need. And this opportunity today is in reach for us, and we shouldn't let it pass us by. At the end of the day, I think we don't need to pause our efforts to join the NLC to address the perennial issue of salaries. We can certainly do both of them at the same time. These efforts go hand in hand. And in times like this where we're still fighting the virus, we know our nurses are struggling every day to continue working long hours, sacrificing time with their families, sacrificing, putting their health and safety at risk every day. I think we need to trust the people who have dedicated their lives to keeping us safe and listen to them to, to help in both ways, address, address all the issues at hand, and not pause our efforts with the NLC to address another. We can do them at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone else? No one? Madam Speaker, if you can close on your amendment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it was testified yesterday or, um, that if we adopted this today and it was effective today, that it would not, that Guam nurses would not be able to use it because we would not have our systems in place yet. We would not be able to issue them licenses. So it would only benefit off-island nurses, Mr. Chair. So what this amendment will do, it puts a year onto the enactment date, which is pretty equivalent to the time that they say they can get the process up and running for local nurses as well. But it, it helps to guarantee what we've been talking about in retention and recruitment efforts, increased pay efforts across the government of Guam. If anybody thinks that any of those bills are funded, they're not. They're not, there's no promise of money for them. There's no, there's nothing in the governor's budget request that shows we're going to increase nurse pay. The study that's going to come out is a study. It's going to be findings. It's not an appropriation for nurse pay. And I think we need to keep the pressure on and keep, keep focused on this, Mr. Chair. And so this amendment is intended to guarantee that retention and recruitment efforts stay in our focus. It's exactly what the testimony has asked us to do, to do these in tandem, to not do this one first. They, this might be part of the puzzle, but it's not the first piece. It's one of the pieces, and almost everybody said the first piece should be the pay, should be equitable pay. We still have a temporary nurse licensure, so there's nothing to prevent people who want to come to Guam from being, from getting a temporary nurse license. We will continue to bring in nurses and revenue for this one year. The Guam Board of Nurses Examiners will also hopefully have additional time to show exactly how our own licensing can be expedited for local and off-island nurses. We didn't miss any boat, Mr. Chair. The NLC testified that it is guaranteed that they are going to give us their fancy software, unless they lied. They did not say something's going to pass us by. We're going, we're supposed to get that equipment if we sign into this compact. So I just think this one year gives time for everything in Guam to line up, including our board, including our pay, including all the incentives that we've talked about. And, um, so, Mr. Chair, I think it would be helpful for us as policymakers especially. Thank you.
Thank you. On the, on the motion, on the, on the amendment, there is an objection. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. Madam Speaker, do you have any more amendments?
No, but I'd like to go back to the first one.
The first one, yes. All right. Does, do you have that amendment to the amendment or Senator Perez? It's, it's in? Okay?
Okay, Senator Perez, you have the floor on your amendment to Speaker Therese's amendment.
Sis, Mr. Chair. So the amendment is, can be found in the drive. It's labeled B-13 TMT SFP P29 Expedited Nurse Licensure Prior to the Nurse Licensure Compact Implementation. So the, the amendment to the amendment reads on line, on page 29, "The Guam Board of Nurse Examiners may waive nurse licensure permits or fees required by law, rule, and regulation, recommend changes to policies, or adopt procedures for expedited licensure for applicants licensed in another jurisdiction prior to the implementation of the Nurse Licensure Compact on Guam." Again, the rationale is that, you know, we really need to develop an expedited procedure so that, you know, you know, we did learn from this pandemic that, you know, we really need to have this procedure in place. And I think this, this is basically feeds off of the, some of the work that's been done to do that. And I think it's also important to, to be able to waive permits and fees if that's going to be the barrier to bringing in nurses. I think that, that's important. And it also addresses my colleague's concern about whether there are changes that need to be made in law. So, yeah, I think that encompasses some of the dialogue discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Are there any objections to the amendment to the amendment? Senator Torres, you're recognized.
If I may ask the proffer of this amendment, why would you give an advantage for the, for the fees for off-island nurses if the concern is, you know, the local nurses and advantage to others coming in? Is that an unfair advantage to give them, have them not pay a fee whereas ours are required to pay a fee? Or is that, I'm just trying to understand this.
Senator Perez, will you yield to the question?
Yeah, so that was in the original amendment. But my amendment to the amendment would basically strike out requirements because I think that addresses some of the concerns about, you know, what requirements are we waiving? And it's just, it's a blanket waiver, waiving. And my amendment to the amendment also adds, recommends changes to policies. And I think, yeah, so that's what my amendment to the amendment does. It, it, it kind of addresses some of the concerns that were discussed earlier in regards to some issues about safety as well as, you know, also expanding the role to, um, you know, if they need to expedite, if the, if the expedition, expedition needs to be, requires law changes, then, you know, they can also recommend those changes as well. And, you know, it's really a may, so the may, you know, should the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners determine that the waiving of the license is not necessary? You know, that's really their discretion. It's not a shall.
Senator Torres, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, thank you.
Would that, would anyone else like to comment on the, speak on the amendment to the amendment? Or are there any objections to the amendment to the amendment? Seeing no objections? Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Before I even, maybe we can scrub this a little bit more. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you read this, okay? The Guam Board of Nurse Examiners may waive nurse licensure permits or fees required by law. Why? I, I think this, we want to find a way to be able to bring them in. But, again, I'm going back to the parody. We were concerned about the protection of our local nurses and, and some type of parody. It's almost there, quite, okay? It's just that, uh, when you, when you're going, when you're going to waive those permits or fees, what does it do? Does it, does it make it better? Bring in a better nurse? Does it, does, what, what does it do? It doesn't, it has nothing to help the local nurse who needs the help. And, um, I just don't think that that was the net change necessary to satisfy my concern with, with the amendment. Thank you. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Just to be clear, are you making objection to the amendment or just your objection to the amendment? Thank you. There is an objection. Would anyone else like to speak? Senator Shelton, you're recognized. Senator Shelton, you also object to the amendment. Anyone else? Does anyone else want to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Okay, there have been two objections to the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment to the amendment? Please raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator Speaker Tulahe, you're, you now have the floor on the original amendment.
To close?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I want to thank my colleagues for their comments on this amendment. Again, uh, this amendment is intended to highlight that if the Nurse Licensure Compact is so beneficial to Guam because it waives the fee for these nurses and it makes the process faster for these nurses, then we should just do that. Waive the fee and make the process faster. And that we can do that. And if the Nurse Licensing Board can, you know, can do that during a pandemic, then they can come up with procedures for regular time to do that so that we can have a reliable process going forward. But I do hear the concern of my colleague from Bergada regarding the words that say for applicants licensed in another jurisdiction. And so when I originally wrote this, it was to highlight that that's, those are the only people that are getting that benefit. It's applicants in another jurisdiction who are not going to pay the $100 fee, who are not going to have to go through the board and, you know, not necessarily have to comply with ever is in Guam law, but has to comply with what is in the compact. So I was only making this apply to those applicants licensed in another jurisdiction to make that point. Yeah, so I was trying to address the point of my colleague from Bergada that applicants licensed in another jurisdiction, right? And that it not, did not extend the same change in procedures to local nurses. However, I was just trying to show that that's what the Nurse License Compact does. It, it applies only to those applying from other jurisdictions, that they don't have to pay the licensing fee on Guam and they didn't have to meet the requirements on Guam. They meet the requirements in their state or in the, on the compact. But, but, you know, from the discussion, I agree that if we can expedite licenses for off-island nurses, then we should absolutely be able to expedite licenses for those from any jurisdiction, from on-island. So I would like to amend my amendment to just delete the words on the fourth line, the words "for applicants licensed in another jurisdiction." So then it would mandate the Board of Nurse Examiners to adopt procedures for expedited licensure for everybody, for off-island and on-island, and to give us their recommendation as to what was the impediment, especially because they already have temporary licenses allowed. They have a procedure, but there are still complaints about the procedure. And so that's exactly why if we have a temporary license procedure, we have an emergency license procedure, and we are still having complaints about our procedure, that we can fix our procedure for all nurses, especially local nurses, and we can make it easier for military spouses to apply, and that Guam can do that. I have every confidence in the Board of Nurse Examiners that they can do that, if they put their minds to it, Mr. Chair. So that would be my amendment to my amendment. And then...
Okay. Does any of my colleagues would like to speak to the amendment of the amendment from the same author? I'm looking. I see no hands. Are there any objections to this amendment? There is one objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. To the next amendment?
That was a motion on the amendment to the amendment, now the overlying amendment.
Now we're going to, on the main amendment, are there anyone? I think everybody spoke because she closed on it. She made the amendment. Are there any objections to the main amendment? There are two objections. All in favor of the amendment? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails. We will now proceed to the remaining amendments on this bill. If I'm correct, I think it's Senator Torres. I think you're the only one left. You withdraw your amendments? Okay, if I'm correct, there are no other amendments on the... All right? Senator Torres, would you like to close on your bill? There's no further amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In closing, I just want to express my gratitude to everyone who took the time to study this bill and provide very thorough discussion. I especially want to thank the panel members who appeared before us and spent many hours. Yesterday, we heard from Xenia Pacina, who is the Guam HPLO Administrator and the Guam Board of Nurse Examiners Executive Director, who shared with us in testimony the timeline of our nursing leaders' quest for Guam to join the Nurse Licence Compact, a process that began in February 2018, three years ago. Because of the efforts of this body and my cosponsors who joined me in this cosponsorship of the bill, our nurse leaders are now one piece of legislation shy of their goal. This is their moment, Mr. Chair. All questions have been answered as best as they can, and we had hoped that all fears should be allayed. As Jim Puente so poignantly stated in his supplemental testimony, "It would be incomprehensible if the opposition of a very few were able to stand in the way of progress and modernization for a profession charged with caring for the sick and deemed the most trustworthy profession as demonstrated by honesty and ethics for 19 consecutive years." And he was pointing to a Gallup poll finding. This, too, dear colleagues, is our moment, our moment to deliver on their quest to join the NLC. I embarked on this journey with them because they simply asked me to. And I've studied it hard, and I've advocated for them, our nursing leaders, who for nearly a year have had to endure extreme hardships to ensure our safety, to care for us at the sacrifice of their own happiness, their own time with their families. Many of them are extremely tired, extremely stressed. But throughout this period, I carried their charge that they started three years ago when they asked me if I would be willing to help them. To realize their goal, they need this piece of legislation. And that was my role, with the utmost respect for their profession, but mostly, in this time of the pandemic, I felt, and my colleagues who joined me in support felt, that if there was anything that we can do to facilitate and assist them, we committed to it, notwithstanding all the challenges that we had to endure in this battle and some personal attacks. But, Mr. Chair, this is about the nurses who want to join a nurse licensure compact, who want to join in what is the trend across the nation for the licensing of nurses. The single model, the single-state license model is becoming obsolete as the delivery of care needs to be fluid across the nation. And that is the advantage of the multi-state license. There has been not one state who has pulled out of the multi-state license in all the years, nearly 20 years it's been in place. Not one has left. So we can argue that there may be drawbacks, there may be concerns, but overwhelmingly, as I asked in the beginning in my opening, let's just judge this on the facts, please, all the facts that we were able to gather. There will always be points of view that differ, but in every decision, we have to be very responsible about acknowledging the desire, the will, the call of the majority, especially when that majority is the leadership. And so to the nurses out there, I ask my colleagues, consider this our moment to deliver on their quest to join the NLC. I respectfully ask for my colleagues' support. And I also thank the nursing leadership for everything that they've done to enlighten us and to help us understand what it is that we, as policymakers, can and ought to do to help them. In this time of pandemic, you deserve our extreme gratitude, our utmost respect, and every effort that we can to facilitate your duty to save lives. Sis, this is my see, my colleagues, for everything, and I respectfully ask for your support. Let this be their moment, as they are just one piece of legislation shy, and that is in our hands. Three long years of this quest, it's not a rash decision. They asked for it. I promised I would help. Join me, please, in delivering on that promise. They deserve it. Sis, this is my see.
Senator Torres, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we rise out of the committee of the whole and that we entertain Bill 13 as amended on the floor and that this bill be moved into the third reading file for voting.
Thank you. Are there any objections to that motion? There being not, Senator Perez, you're objecting? All right, there is an objection. All in...
Point of inquiry is her objection to rise out of the committee of the whole?
Yes, that's the motion, is to rise from the committee of the whole to then place it on the third reading file.
But that's two different motions, Mr. Chair. You can't do that from, we can't do that from, we can't go send it down to the third reading if we're committee of the whole. So that's two motions. So what is her objection?
It's to rise from the committee of the whole, and then I would make that motion to the...
Should I restate it?
Is her objection to rise out of the committee of the whole?
Yes. Mr. Chair, if I may restate it. I move to rise from the committee of the whole with the recommendation that Bill Number 13-36COR, as amended in the committee of the whole, be placed in the third reading file.
Thank you. Did everybody understand that? Okay. Are there any objections to rise from the committee of the whole with a recommendation to be placed on the third reading? None? I don't see a hand. If you want to object, I cannot understand when you got the mask on, okay? So colleagues, please raise your hand if you have an objection. I recognized Senator Perez earlier. Yes, Senator, do you still object, Senator Perez? To rise from the committee of the whole? Okay.
Place it in the third reading file.
So we'll just stay here all day?
Can you, you're objecting to the rising to committee of the whole with the recommendation, correct?
Yeah, I'm objecting to the recommendation.
You're objecting to the recommendation, but you're not objecting to the rise to committee of the whole. That was exactly what Senator Blas asked. There's two motion. Then we can't go to committee of the whole. You know, my colleagues, we will recess for one hour. Some of us...